Good evening. This is the Village Council regular public meeting. The date is June 12th, 2024. The time is 7:33 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of the schedule, including the date and time of this meeting roll call.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Whites.
Here.
Councilmember Winograd.
Here.
Mayor Vagianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I move that the bills, claims, and vouchers and statement of funds on hand as of May 31st, 2024 be accepted as submitted.
Second.
Perrin.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Whites.
Yes.
Winograd.
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes. I move that the Village Council minutes of January 17th, April 24th, and May 1st, 2024, having been reviewed by the Village Council and now available in the Village Clerk's office, be approved as submitted.
A second, I did just want to take a moment to note this in the record because the clerks asked me to acknowledge this. We're a little bit behind on our minutes and we're aware of it and we're beginning to address it tonight to a couple of them coming out and we're working very hard to address them and we'll be releasing them, but I wanted everyone to know that the Clerk's Office has been diligently aware of this and ticking it off, so thank you to them. And just before we vote on that, I wanted everyone to know. Thank you.
Perrin.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Whites.
Yes.
Winograd.
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes. And we have several proclamations. First one is recognizing Juneteenth. Pam, will you do the honors?
Yes, thank you. Whereas, the emancipation proclamation was formally issued on January 18th, on January 18, 163, declaring that enslaved Africans in the Confederate states of America were to be freed. And whereas, over two and one-half years later, Union Army General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas and read Order Number Three on June 19th, 1865, informing the enslaved residents of the state of their freedom. And whereas, June 19th, Juneteenth, a linguistic blend of the words June and 19th was adopted to commemorate this historical and pivotal date in American history. And whereas, beginning on January 1st, 1980, several states and municipal governments in the United States have declared June 19th, Juneteenth, a legal holiday. And whereas, June 19th, Juneteenth, is celebrated nationally and internationally to recognize the end of the enslavement of Africans in the United States and to celebrate the culture and achievements of African Americans. And whereas, today, millions of Americans of all races, creeds, religious, and ethnic backgrounds celebrate Juneteenth, which not only celebrates freedom, but also acknowledges the achievements of African Americans. And as celebrations continue to spread, we can all be reminded of the oft-repeated maxim, "Until all are free, none are free," that highlights the manner of the end of slavery in the United States. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim that the 19th day of June shall be annually known as Juneteenth in the Village of Ridgewood, and urges all residents to join in this joyous celebration of freedom and learn more about its origins, reflecting on how they can promote equity and honoring the resiliency, achievements, and legacy of our Black community.
Thank you, Pam. And now we have a proclamation regarding National Intern Day. Siobhan.
Sure. So before I read this, I want to acknowledge a couple things. First of all, National Intern Day is in July, and this is the way our meetings work. It's to acknowledge the work that interns do in the proclamation. But we, Rich Calby, has several interns working at Ridgewood Water, and we're very grateful to them. We also have some kids within our STEPS programming working at Ridgewood Water, and we didn't list all their names. And then for me and for Pam, Pam's interns, which were graduate students, really provided a lot of services and a lot of values, and we capitalized college-age students, which was great. And then for me and my myriad of committees, I have, I'm representing tonight, we have our sole intern who showed up, MJ Aguilar. But I do want to acknowledge Henry Walsh, Alex Violi, Travis Young, Grace Kim. Grace Kim could count twice because she serves on Shade Tree, and they have really made her work and produced a ton of artwork. Cole Dashink, who's from my alma mater, Lafayette, and of course MJ. Our interns make a lot of things happen. They present a lot of skills, and this proclamation is for you. And for everybody else who utilizes one, mark it down, July 25th. It's a good day to take them out to lunch. So the proclamation is, whereas, the Village of Ridgewood recognizes the positive impact that experiential learning has on preparing students for success in life, and that all students should have access to experiential learning opportunities. And whereas, experiential learning opportunities such as work-based learning are important to the economic vitality of both businesses, communities, and government. Whereas, work-based learning serves to connect students' skills and competencies gained from education with those used in the workplace. And whereas, on the last Thursday in July, National Intern Day is celebrated across the country by millions of students, higher education institutions, employers, municipalities, and other organizations. Whereas, in the recognition of National Intern Day, Ridgewood is committed to elevating awareness, advancing meaningful and diverse work-based learning opportunities, and acknowledging those students involved locally in internships, as well as the education institutes and employers who work with them and support of them. Whereas, in particular, we highlight MJ Aguilar, Cole Dashink, Alex Violi, Travis Young, Grace Kim, and Henry Walsh for their work with Councilmember Winograd. And we recognize Ridgewood High School students, Justine Benicoffo for his work with Ridgewood Water as the GIS intern, as James Ruane as Varan Chobe, students from the school Transitioning and Employment Program for Student Success, also known as STEPS, who also work with Ridgewood Water and are as our GIS interns. Whereas, Ridgewood recognizes the importance of internships and student involvement as we strive to be the best place to live, work, raise a family, and intern. Now therefore, be resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim July 25th, 2024 as National Intern Day in the Village of Ridgewood, and urges all residents to join in creating meaningful and diverse work-based learning opportunities, recognizing that interns of today are truly the future leaders of tomorrow. And I'm going to clap because MJ is here and everybody else is taking their exam, so thank you, Tori.
Very nice. And if you'll indulge me, I am the greatest advocate for internships. They provide real-world experience. They provide resume material that is substantive. They provide contacts for future employment. And I am a great believer in the fact that schools only give you half the education you need. You need practical experience. And by the way, the, some of the best internships are the ones where you think you want to do something, and so you go and you intern in a law firm or with a doctor's office, and you realize after doing it, I don't want to do that. And then you change direction while you have time to change direction. So this is something that I believe every student in high school and college should be doing regularly by the time you graduate college. If you don't have four internships at a minimum, you should have gotten. So just my thoughts. Thank you. And let's move on to the National Pollinator Week proclamation. Pam.
Thank you. Whereas, pollinator species, such as thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food supply. And whereas, pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse urban and suburban ecosystems. And whereas, pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. Whereas, for decades, the Village of Ridgewood has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways, as well as wildlife habitats. And whereas, the Village of Ridgewood provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban environments. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim June 17th through 23rd as the, excuse me, as the Village of Ridgewood's observance of National Pollinator Week and the Village of Ridgewood as an affiliate of Bee City, USA, and urges all residents to recognize this observance.
Thank you, Pam. And if there's, if there's, here, let's give it a round of applause. And if there is anyone in the audience who during public comment would like to advocate for Pollinator Week, by all means, they should, as I did on for National Intern Week. So let's move on.
Shall I read the?
Please do.
Whereas, NJSA 40A:9-146 requires every municipality to have a municipal tax assessor appointed. And whereas, NJSA 54:1-35.30 requires said appointed tax assessor to hold a certified tax assessor certificate issued by the New Jersey Division of Taxation in the Department of Treasury. And whereas, NJSA 40A:9-148 stipulates that the term of the office for the tax assessor is for four years from the first day of July next following his appointment. And whereas, William Palumbo has fulfilled the requirements for a tax assessor and holds a certified tax assessor certificate. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood, Bergen County, New Jersey, that William Palumbo be and is hereby appointed tax assessor of the Village of Ridgewood from July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2028. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Perrin.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Whites.
Yes.
Winograd.
Yes.
And Vagianos.
Yes. Bill, will you repeat after me? I, William Palumbo.
I, William Palumbo.
Oh, excuse me. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties of the office of municipal tax assessor.
Say it again.
I'll cut it in half. I'll cut it in half. You just failed the test.
I know.
And justly, oh, excuse me. Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of municipal tax assessor.
A municipal tax assessor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. We are very fortunate to have you on board. You have been here for a little while. Yep. And I know that we've got nothing but very, very good reviews about you. We're very, very happy that you're here, and we look forward to many more good years ahead. So thank you so much. Congratulations, everyone. Congratulations. Nice job. Can I have my Bible back? Thank you very much. Good? And I just need you to sign this. And I just need a pen.
I just want to say that it was my pleasure to make the recommendation of Bill to serve his first full term, starting tonight, as the tax assessor for the Village of Ridgewood. As Siobhan would say, fun fact, Bill grew up in West Patterson Woodland Park. His mom actually still lives right down the street from where I lived. And I remember Bill and his brother Kevin growing up on Highview Drive. He has done a tremendous job in fulfilling the unexpired term of our previous tax assessor. He is one of the most hands-on tax assessors I've ever dealt with in my career. He is out in the field, and he is ensuring that the added assessments that are due each and every year are full and complete, and that we are assessing each property owner for the full value of their property. So I look forward to working with him for the next four years.
High praise. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, you guys.
Congratulations.
And let's move on. We will now go to public comment.
Frank, The B-Man, Mortimer, 426 Van Buren Street. And I just want to say thank you for the proclamation. And what, I want to give a little history to Bee City, USA, because Ridgewood was the first bee city in New Jersey and one of the first in the Northeast. And that brought a tremendous amount of positive attention to our village, and it also showed that we are an environmental leader. And what was cool about it is that to do that, first Parks and Rec was behind it, and so for that, I thanked Nancy Bigos. And then had to go around and talk to all the different environmental groups here in Ridgewood. And at that time, Green Ridgewood and the Green Team were separate, so it was those two. It was a Conservancy. It was the Wildscape. And it was like I was a paper going around to these different groups saying, hey, here's how we can all do it. But what's exciting about Bee City and why I'm so proud of it is it really unites all of the environmental groups for one mission, to bring it all together. And like we had slow-mo May this year, that ties into it. We're talking about different pesticides and integrated pest control management. All of that ties into it. So it really is something that I'm very proud that the village is part of it, and I thank you again for reading it, and let's go Pollinator Week.
Thank you, Frank, and thank you for your work on this. Anyone else? No? Let's go to our hybrid access. Susan, you're up.
Hi. Susan Ruane, 705 Kingsbridge Lane. I'm calling in regard to the footbridge. I believe it's on next week's agenda, if I'm correct, or the week after, in regards to having the estimates come in and that it'll be then discussed. I was wondering, is also at that meeting, like in, like it happens in other meetings, will you guys be able to approve the, the estimates? I know that otherwise you have to wait a few more weeks for the approval, but this has been an ongoing, eyesore, inconvenient, dangerous for everybody in the neighborhood. And there's been other things that seem to get prioritized that have like, you know, a vote in, and then they get approved, and then the thing gets immediately worked on. We have been waiting for, going on to four years now, for this to be fixed. So I'm just trying to figure out when will it actually be done? I know you approved the funds in February, and it's now June, and we're only now getting the estimates. So something happened along the way. There was a lack of communication. And I would like to see if that, after we get the estimates, if at that same session it could be approved to have the work started and it be assigned to a contractor. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. Does anyone wish to respond?
I do, Mayor. With regard to Susan's comments, it is not listed on the next agenda. The bids are due on June 26th. They'll be opened. There is a review process that needs to be conducted by the village engineer, and in some cases, depending on the, how the form that the bids are received in, they do also have to go to the village attorney for review. At that time, a memo will be drafted recommending award by Chris Rudishhauser, assuming everything is in order. It'll be considered at a work session, and then will likely be awarded at the next public meeting. I do want to say that the capital money was not approved in February. It was approved the same night that the budget was adopted, I believe it was April 10th. And there is an estoppel period, which is a 20-day period following the adoption of a bond ordinance, where no work can be done until that 20 days has passed. So we could not start moving on any of this until after that 20-day period had completed. We did have some additional work to do with the bridge engineer, as I've reported at prior meetings. This is not a project that we are engineering in-house in the village engineer's office. It needed to be subcontracted out because it is a specialized form of engineering. Once we had those bid specifications, they were immediately put out for advertisement, and as I mentioned earlier, the bids are due on June 26th.
Thank you, Keith, and why don't you just continue on with your manager's report?
I'll just keep going.
There you go.
First of all, I'm pleased to report that tonight, for introduction, we have our stormwater management ordinance. It's Ordinance 4006. I want to take the time to thank Mayor Vagianos, Deputy Mayor Perrin, and the team from Green Ridgewood, along with our engineering department, for all the work they did in putting this stormwater management ordinance together. Other municipalities take a stock ordinance off the shelf from the DEP. They adopt it because they have to check the box, because they're required to do so under DEP regulation. That is not what happened here in the Village of Ridgewood. We probably met eight times on this ordinance and went through the ordinance and the recommendations made by Green Ridgewood, one by one by one. And I think we have walked away with a resiliency ordinance, with a sustainability ordinance. It's more than just stormwater management, and I want to thank the entire team who helped put that together. At the last council meeting, I was directed, even in my absence, to send a letter to the State Historic Preservation Office requesting that our application before them for the Sheddler Park Development Project be held in abeyance. That letter was sent to Dr. Markipool, the Director of the Historic Preservation Office, on June 6th, requesting that the project be held until we have a solidified plan for, to address the soil issues that have arisen over at Sheddler. Speaking of the Sheddler property, this Saturday, we had, this past Saturday, we had a very successful open house event. I want to thank Carol Balkowski from my office for helping to arrange and put that together. I think we had 70 people who came through. We had 90 signed up, about 70 people actually showed and walked through the house. The feedback was very positive. There was a great exchange of ideas about possibilities for future use. We also had a reporter from the Bergen Record, NorthJersey.com, present, and she was able to share on the NorthJersey.com website photos of every room, a video, and an article outlining the results of the restoration of the Zabriskie House. We're adding on to tonight's agenda Resolution 224, which the council discussed during their pre-meeting. It is a memo from Chris Rudishhauser for a modification to the American asphalt contract. In discussing it with Chris, and I also had a conversation with Councilwoman Reynolds and with Mayor Vagianos earlier in the week, moving this resolution and adopting it tonight will give us better lead time to address the Clinton Avenue sidewalk project, which we are determined to do over the summer before school starts in September. So I would ask for the council's indulgence in considering that as a late starter tonight, but it will keep us on schedule in delivery of those sidewalks. We are going to host our meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers this coming Monday, June 17th, here in the courtroom at Village Hall at 7:30 PM. The format for that meeting will be a presentation by the Army Corps of both their mid, medium-term and long-term programming that they have, and they can offer assistance to the village with. There will, at the end of probably a 45-minute presentation, be a public comment period. The intention during that public comment period is to take it by area of town. So if you are affected by the Hoakus Brook, we'll talk to that group and we'll have feedback. If you're affected by the Saddle River, we'll talk to that group and have feedback. And if you're affected by, by stormwater conditions, we'll do that as a, as a third-tier discussion. So we're looking forward to that. There's also hybrid access to that meeting, just as there are to our Village Council meetings. So if you cannot appear here in person or you are away, you still have the opportunity to use the link on the website to join the meeting and provide feedback to the Army Corps of Engineers. Ordinance 4004, this is establishing the parking at the taxi stand. I am going to recommend to the council tonight that they defeat this ordinance and consider it for reintroduction. I have this ordinance being reviewed by Chief Lyons to make sure that everything he needs is contained in the ordinance for purposes of enforcement. So we will be able to bring this back to the next work session after his review with any of his recommendations, and then we can list it for reintroduction at the July meeting. I did have the opportunity last week to join the Ridgewood Rotary Club for lunch at premise at the church, and I have to tell you, it was a great, robust discussion. We talked about everything from budgeting to traffic to recycling. Matter of fact, they had a lot of recommendations that I've already brought back to Sean Hamlin about our recycling program. But I just want to thank the residents of Ridgewood for being open with my office, providing recommendations for how we can improve things and how we can make things better. It's going to be a collective effort to improve the services here in the village, and certainly that feedback is extremely helpful. Tomorrow is the Police Chief for a Day program here in Bergen County. We have one lucky young man who has been appointed to shadow Chief Lyons during the day tomorrow. I know Mayor Vagianos will be here to swear him in, and then there'll be a larger swearing and ceremony down at the courthouse in Hackensack. We're looking forward to that event. Also looking forward next week to attending my first Ridgewood High School graduation. I want to thank Dr. Schwartz for his invitation to that event, and I do want to extend my congratulations to all those who are graduating here in Ridgewood in the next week or so, whether it be from middle school or from high school. I'm looking forward to that event. From what I am told, their Ridgewood graduation is like no other. So looking forward to joining you there.
That is absolutely the truth.
I have a couple of announcements. The Ridgewood Guild is sponsoring Music Night on Friday nights through Labor Day downtown. Music in the Park, sponsored by Destination Ridgewood, will be held on Saturday evenings from 7:30 to 9:30 at Van S. Square. June 15th is Thursday Evening Collective. June 22nd is Mary's Basement, and June 29th is The Racket. The 66th Annual Free Summer Concert Series has begun at the Cashew Shell, at Veterans Field. Concerts begin at 8:30 PM unless noted and are scheduled for every Tuesday and Thursday in the months of July and August. Please note that there are no concerts on Tuesday nights in the month of June. The performances are, this Thursday, June 13th, is the RHS Art Beat 2024, and on Thursday, June 20th, it's the Men's Club Choir Course. The Ridgewood Guild is sponsoring Free Movies in the Park, Wednesday nights, at 9:00 PM. The Ridgewood Guild is sponsoring Free Movies in the Park, Wednesday nights, at 9:00 PM in Van Ness Square. Tonight is Mulan. June 26th is Forty Second Street. July 10th is Barbie, special event. Siobhan, you're in. July 24th is Mary Poppins. August 7th is The Batman, and August 14th is the day after tomorrow. The movies in the month of August will begin at 8:15 PM. The Village of Ridgewood and all village offices will be closed in observance of Juneteenth on Wednesday, June 19th. The recycling center will also be closed, and there will be no curbside bulk pickup refuse that week. Village council meetings that are upcoming, June 26th, work session, 7:30. July 10th, work session, 7:30. And July 17th is our public meeting, which will also begin at 7:30. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. And let's go to our council reports. Siobhan, you want to kick it off?
Sure. So, big reminder that Monday, June 24th, is Mulch Monday. We've been doing a lot of things, Lorraine, Pam and I, to deal with the tree wells and the weeds uptown. And we are going to, in an effort to make the town sparkle and look beautiful for Fourth of July, we are working on weeding and mulching the tree wells that are up there. So if anybody is interested, please reach out to me or Lorraine or Pam. I mean, of course Evan and Paul are coming and they don't know it yet, but Mulch Monday will start at 8:00 AM. And we are, we often get this question, Lorraine and I have had some, we are going to be discussing a more longer-term holistic approach with these tree wells, but in the short term, we have to maintain them. And we're very grateful to Shade Tree for initiating that. In addition to that, we are actively looking from Shade Tree for what we're calling Tree Captains. So on October 19th, we have to go and plant all 92 saplings. So last year, the only one who represented from the dais was Matt Rogers. So I'm hoping this year, all of you go out and lead a group and help with this plant initiative. And if anybody from the public wants to be a part of it, whether you're a captain or a planter, the date is October 19th, and there'll be more information coming on that. So mark those dates down. I had two things, I didn't have any other committee meetings, but I did want to talk about two things here. One, last week's meeting was so interesting to me because we broke stride and our agendas are formulaic, so they go in a certain order. We introduce water ordinances before other ordinances, and that is defined very clearly to this council. And last week, I felt that providing the public information at the very beginning really was a great way to do it. So I want to add the order that we discuss our business to discussion for the next work session. So I just want to let people know why I felt that way. One, we had, often when we're trying to schedule things, it's hard. Our student went first, and that was great. And then we, people come here for information, and when we put the information like a full hour back, I don't think that's advantageous to the public. So Eileen, I pulled the existing ordinance, and I just wanted this council to know that I'm definitely having some of those discussions, and I think it would be beneficial to the public information and our communication to discuss the order of our meetings. Because sometimes we make the public wait, in my opinion, too long. And I thought last week was very interesting to put the information out first. So I'm going to pass this to Eileen for the next work session, and we can all think about that. And then this morning, early this morning, I met with the Ridgewood Partnership for Community Wellness. And one of the other things I think we're doing, part of our responsibility is to make sure our community is happy, healthy, well, and safe. And we're not really leading by examples. We sit for too long in these meetings, and we've discussed this. The Lighthouse Initiative is a multifaceted approach, and they're going to talk about things. But one of the things they talk about is movement and getting up and alive. And at the risk of being mocked, I will say it, I would like to introduce a phrase called the dais dash. And after 90 minutes of sitting, we break and we actually get up and we walk around and we get up and we sit back down. Because sitting is the new smoking. It's really bad. And when people ask me, what's my least favorite thing about being on council, it's the sitting. And I know some of us get up, but so if everybody, I don't think we need a resolution, but you're going to be hearing more about wellness, and I think we can do better. And Paul, if you'd be so obliged, not mid-sentence, but after an hour and a half, I think we don't break where we go and talk to the public, but we get up and we inject some movement into this, and I think we would benefit from that. And when you read about the interesting effort, you're going to see it, how important these things are. And so it's important for us to tell this because we want our community to be well, but we're not doing a really good job. Sitting for seven hours is not a good reference. So at nine o'clock, I would like to see if we're still here, if you could do it.
I'm going to comment on this one. It's my turn, but I like your ideas.
Okay.
And now we'll go to Evan.
Great, thanks so much, Paul. It's only been a week since we've been here last. I really only had two things that I wanted to bring up. First, Keith had hit upon this, the Shedler event last Saturday, I thought was really, really well done. I want to specifically call out Carol Bilkowski for doing a wonderful job in leading it. I know Pam and I took turns working the door. Paul, I know, so you stopped by. Really well done. We had a bunch of other volunteers as well from the community. Carol did a nice job with placards, laying out some of the history, some of the more recent history as well around the home. I thought it was the type of transparency that we'd want from our government. And Keith, really appreciate you and your team for putting that on. I think it was a real benefit to the conversation that we're having around Shedler as it's ongoing. Secondly, just want to again mention the Fourth of July. Would encourage all of you to go to the website, ridgewoodjuly4th.com. As I've mentioned in the past, it is completely privately funded. Would really encourage all of you to think about making a donation, volunteering, or 50/50 tickets. And I want to thank so many members of the council on the dais currently for buying some tickets, making me look good in front of the committee. But really, really hugely important, Ridgewood Fourth of July is one of those things that just happens every year or so you think. There's so much work that goes behind it and so much in terms of fundraising that the volunteers take care of so that we don't have to labor the taxpayer with bill for that. So I'd really encourage all of you to get involved, either financially or with your time, and certainly show up on July 4th. This could be an absolute wonderful event, as it is every year. And more to come on that, but we really do owe gratitude to the really dozens of volunteers behind the scenes that make that happen so seamlessly.
Thanks, Ev. Lorraine?
Thank you. I just want to kind of repeat what Keith said about Cashew Shell. Concerts started last week. In June, they're every Thursday night. In July and August, they're Tuesdays and Thursdays. Come out, no matter what, it's always a good time. It's always good music, no matter whether it's your genre or not. I always feel like I enjoy it. Project Pride, if anybody, if you haven't been in the downtown lately, the flowerpots are thriving. They really look great. We've had some nice weather, good rain. We're coming into a little bit of a dry spell and heat, so I'm a little concerned, but hopefully the watering will continue and they will still look good because they look great right now. Next week is our last CSAC meeting of this year. We take off for the summer, so it's next Thursday, June 20th. If you have any concerns or issues about safety, come to the meeting at 7:30 in the garden room. And last but not least, I am very excited tonight that the Clinton Avenue and East Glen Avenue sidewalks are up for a vote. I hope that we all vote to award the contract, and I'd love to see Clinton Avenue sidewalks done this summer because it's really important for the school kids that this gets done before the start of next year's school year. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Mayor, if I may, I just don't want to leave the folks on West Glen hanging.
Good.
We have a, we have a meeting, I think it's scheduled for July 2nd, with county engineering. Again, there's still discussion about the placement of any required retaining walls in the county right-of-way and who would be responsible for those walls. So until we get over those hurdles with what the county is looking for, we can't move on that project. It is definitely still a priority project in engineering, but we need our partners at the county to agree how we're going to move forward with the development of those sidewalks.
Thanks, Keith. Pam?
Thank you. With the hot weather coming, I wanted to reiterate the irrigation rules that we have for Ridgewood Water. Remember that if you have an odd-number house, you're watering on Tuesday and Saturday, and if you're an even-number house, you're watering on Wednesday and Sunday. Monday and Friday are reserved for municipal properties. If you're doing above-ground sprinkling, you can water before 10:00 AM and after 6:00 PM. But if you have an in-ground sprinkler system, you're watering between 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM. If you have a smart controller permit, you can water between 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM every day of the week. And let's see, you should be receiving a notice on that this weekend or sometime next week. The Open Space Committee had a lovely park walk in partnership with the Conservancy for Ridgewood Public Lands and with the Ridgewood Women Gardeners behind the stable that was of the Children's Sensory Garden and the Children's and the Green Kids Garden. And the next one will be this Saturday at 10:00 AM. This one will be of Looning Park, which has a very interesting history, and Maple Field. And let's see, Green Ridgewood and Green Team Met, and the Central Business District Advisory Committee will meet tomorrow in person in the senior lounge at 8:30 AM. I want to thank the Rotary, the AM Rotary Club for painting fireboxes in town. We had a crew of 13 people, and the Signal Division gave us paint and scrapers, and we ran around painting the fireboxes red and some of them white that we had painted last year. And so we did the little white bits on that. So we really appreciated the opportunity. It was fun. We had a great time. But I had to leave early because of the Shedler open house, and I really appreciated that the neighbors came. They got to see what they're living with, and I think they were gratified to see how much progress was made inside. Flag Day is coming up, June 14th. The American Legion Post 53 will be going into the schools to teach children how to respect the flag, how to fold a flag, how to dispose of a flag, all these things that really show our respect for our country. So I think that is an important day. I also want to thank the Ridge School 3rd graders for coming here last week. Eileen Young and I entertained them here in the courtroom. Of course, most of them had never been in a courtroom before. Their excitement was so inspiring. Eileen was talking about how people go to the building, she was telling them what every department does, and she was explaining how the building department has to issue permits for things that you do in your home if you want to have a block party. And the first question was, if we have a lemonade stand, do we have to get a permit? So they were just adorable. And that's all I have.
Thanks so much, Pam. And I met with the Ridgewood Chamber of Commerce this morning, and while they discussed many things, they were especially excited for Ordinance 4002 that is going to be read this evening, which expands the permitted uses, actually changes the way they're listed and more as a general category as opposed to a specific business. Because this will allow businesses to open much more quickly as opposed to waiting for a very long time if they're not particularly on that list. And several examples of what has had to wait a very long time were frozen yogurt shops when they first came to town, the Fred Astaire Dance Studio, and many others. Because businesses are always changing, so there are a lot of great uses that, again, because now they're in categories, this will really make a difference in our central business district. And I just wanted to take a moment to comment on a couple of things that have been said tonight. Keith, you're absolutely right, this stormwater management ordinance is, you know, we talk about flooding in the village and what a terrible problem it is. This is part, this is a part of the solution. Is it going to solve it? No. But it's a very key part of what needs to be done. And I really want to thank Joan Hubertus.
Joan Hubertus and David Refkin.
And David Refkin, who just did yeoman's work. They did so much to get this done. And again, I laud those who do work to do something constructive in our town to make it better. And as far as the article that you mentioned, Keith, on Shedler, it was also on the front page section of the local section of today's record, if anybody wants to take a look at it. Siobhan, as far as your recommendations, first, as to the order of meetings, I think that that's an excellent idea. I did not realize that it was an ordinance that needs to be revised, but I think we should move on this quickly. You know, last week, we put out there the information about contamination before public comment because we thought that this would give people information before they went to the podium so that they could ask better informed questions as opposed to asking questions saying, look, we need this information. Give them this, and then they can ask further questions beyond that. So having that flexibility, I think, is a really great idea, and I know that I'm going to support that. I'm also going to support not sitting too long. You know, we're, sometimes we're here for four, four-and-a-half hours, and it's, it can be very, very difficult. So I don't know that I would call it the dais dash, but we can, we can discuss that part. That's, I think, a detail. And the Clinton Avenue sidewalks, yeah, this is something that we definitely need to get done tonight. And Evan, I'm so glad that we can make you look good buying tickets for the Fourth of July.
I'm almost out.
I don't know that I have enough.
I'll get more, though.
I don't know that I have enough money to buy enough tickets to make you look that good, but you know, I'll do, I promise to do what I can. And finally, I had the pleasure this morning of having the Somerville 3rd graders here. This is way too much fun for everybody. We had a great time, they had a great time, and I look forward to it for every elementary school. And that's all I have, and let's move on with our agenda. Eileen?
The following resolutions numbered 24-186 through 24-193 are to be adopted by consent agenda with one vote by the village council. 24-186, award sole-source contract GIS software support and upgrades, not to exceed $27,500. 24-187, award contract construction of East Ridgewood and West End PFOs Treatment Facilities, not to exceed $7,773,000. 24-188, award contract under state contract Ford F600 chassis, 4x4 SD regular cab, not to exceed $61,685. 24-189, award contract under Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System, steel mason dump body, not to exceed $31,566. 24-190, award professional engineering services contract hydraulic modeling, not to exceed $85,000. 24-191, authorize renewal of shared services agreement, purchase of bulk water Hawthorne. 24-192, authorize change order professional engineering services contract, raw water mains, not to exceed $60,030. 24-193, refund of credit balance for water billing, 511 South Broad Street LLC, not to exceed $1,108.99. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whitez?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Yes. And now I move the first reading of Ordinance 4006.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whitez?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Yes, so ordered. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 4006 by title?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 190, Land Use and Development of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood at Section 190-83, Stormwater Management and Flood Protection.
I move that ordinance, well, before I move, I wanted to say thank you to Chris Rudis-Hauser and our village planner, John Barry, because in our multiple meetings, they really brought to the fore the practicalities of flood, stormwater management. And in addition to the fact that Joan Hubertus and David Refkin took a Rutgers course in order to participate in sculpting this ordinance. So I move that Ordinance 4006 be adopted on first reading and that June 26th, 2020. So I move that ordinance 4006 be adopted on first reading and that June 26th, 2024, be fixed as the date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance 4001 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos.
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4001?
Yes. An ordinance to amend Chapter 265 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Vehicles and Traffic at Section 265-59 Schedule 9 Stop Intersections and Section 265-60 Schedule 10 Yield Intersections.
I move the public, excuse me, the public hearing is now open. Seeing no comments, I move the public hearing be closed.
I second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4001 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance 4002 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4002?
Yes. An ordinance to amend Section, Chapter 190 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Land Use and Development to add definitions for a variety of uses and to expand the scope of uses permitted in the village's business and commercial zones.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no comment, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4002 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance 4003 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
I second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos.
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4003?
Bond ordinance providing for the water pollution control facility project in and by the Village of Ridgewood in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $478,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $454,000 bonds or notes of the village to finance part of the cost thereof.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no comments, I move the public hearing be closed.
I second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4003 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes. And this is the ordinance that we are going to go through the process of moving, seconding, and voting upon, but that at the suggestion and recommendation of Keith, we are going to defeat. But we have to go through the process, we can't just remove it from the agenda. So I move the clerk read ordinance 4004 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos.
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4004?
Yes. An ordinance to amend Chapter 265 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Vehicles and Traffic at Section 265-27 Taxi Stands and Section 265-72 Schedule 22 Loading Zones and Section 265-73 Schedule 23 Taxi Stands.
The public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Boyd, a loving 342 South Irving Street. If you recall, I spoke about the previous ordinance that was also defeated regarding this issue. I'd like to thank very much Mr. Rogers, who spoke to me on the phone today about this. I'd also like to thank the manager who responded to an email inquiry I made about this. Manager responded on May 10th. However, regardless of my discussion with Mr. Rogers and regardless of my reading in detail of the manager's reply to me, I still have some issues with this, I'd like to mention them now so that perhaps the third time this ordinance is issued or introduced, it can be resolved without any further ado. This ordinance, as I read it, is divided into two parts. There is one section that deals with the reserved parking spaces and another section that deals with a loading zone. Just for the record, 265-72 covers all of the loading zones in the village and there is already a loading zone on North Broad Street. Is this the same loading zone that is identified in 265-72? It indicates that it's 104 feet south of Franklin Avenue and it ends 44 feet south of that. Or is this a new loading zone that we're adding?
My microphone. I honestly don't know the dimensions, so I will have to verify that.
Yeah, I, I think it's the same loading zone that's already there. I guess my concern is when I wrote to the manager about this and I see on the proposed ordinance, it says that the loading zone will be available from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and it's for use by the tenant and other users authorized by the manager. That's what concerns me. There is only one loading zone on the block. I don't know why the manager has to approve use by other people. The loading zone is currently being used now, there's several restaurants on the block. So that, that language that was inserted in the current version of the ordinance just kind of threw me because I don't know why anybody else would need to get approval of a loading, of using the loading zone so long as they are legitimately using the loading zone like any other loading zone in the, in the village.
I think the intention was to offer some flexibility contingent upon whether or not the lower level will ever be occupied.
Not really sure what that means, but you understand what I'm saying. That's the only loading zone on the block. If you're going to restrict its use, I don't know where the people who need to have a loading zone are going to go. Right now, there's a loading zone and that's the only loading zone on the street. If the manager's going to have to approve somebody other than the tenant of the building using a loading zone, that's going to complicate people from unloading their trucks. Several restaurants on the street. The current loading zone is authorized for use from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I see that this changes it from 7:00 to 5:00. Not sure if that presents a problem for the people who have restaurants that are open early. There's a bagel shop there, there's also Dunkin' Donuts there, so you just might want to check that out. I guess another question I have is when it is not a loading zone, what is it? Can people park there? Or is it, you can't use it for anything during the hours when it's not a loading zone? If it can be used for parking at times when it is not a, a loading zone, it is not striped as such. Nobody would park there because it's, it's got a hash striping on it.
It's striped to prevent parking currently.
I'm sorry?
It's striped to prevent parking currently.
Okay, so what happens in the times when it is not a loading zone? Nothing?
Well, currently, it's being used differently than some of the other loading zones in the district. Because some of the loading zones in the district act as loading zones during the day and then act as temporary meter parking on off-hours.
Right, I understand that.
This one, this one has never been set up for parking. I don't know what the logistics of that would be because those stalls closer to Franklin Avenue are straight-on stalls and the ones beyond the taxi station are parallel, are, are like angled, angled, angled parking. So, you know, that's something that we would, we would have to talk through, again, with the police chief, to just determine the safety factor associated with that.
They can't be associated for parking, just technically, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this here. The bump out from Ridgewood Taxi comes out, so it makes it too short to be a legal parking spot. So you have, you have the first four pro, like, you know, that are in there that are one-way and they, they have the appropriate depth to receive it. It's always been a loading zone forever because you have the, the two columns that come out from the structure and it truncates any available space. It's too short to receive a car.
You could parallel park there very easily.
I don't think you could fit more than one part and you can't, you can't just park in something that has that delineation. It would, the vehicle would be towed.
And that would make sense as to why it's not been a designated parking area.
It's shorter.
As some of the other loading zones have in the Central Business District.
I mean, I walk my dog there and it, you, it comes out. So, you know, the, the first four spots, I don't know if I'm making sense, are deeper. You pull in and you can bit. And then, you know, in the old days, when you'd call your parents and say, I'm at Ridgewood Taxi, they'd pull up and you would stand, there's more curb space underneath the overhang to prevent inclement weather from raining on you while you were waiting.
Yes, but.
I think you should take a look at it, they get trucks in there, so I think you'd get a car in there.
When we have the flexible loading zones, they become parallel parking spots.
Yeah.
So it's not head-in.
Right.
And I, I think that's the area where a boxcar comes in to pick up, to pick up passengers.
I guess we could debate this, I'm just asking it, it be looked at. Because you have a designation that during a certain time, it's a loading zone. My question is, what happens during the times it's not a loading zone? It's possible you could fit some parking in there. Maybe the engineer could take a look at it and see what the story is. But again, my major concern is the wording that the manager approved by the manager. It is currently a loading zone, it is currently being used by restaurants to receive goods, it is the only loading zone on the block. If there's going to be some restriction placed there, I think that may affect the businesses that are in the area. My other concern was regarding the time during which those parking spaces were reserved. That's what I spoke to the village attorney today about. The ordinance is written now, basically it was 24/7/365. There was no targeted time in which the spaces could be used. So if the spaces are going to be used only between 7:00 and 5:00, the ordinance should say that. I believe the manager wrote back to me and indicated that it was covered in the lease, but typically, the public does not have access to the lease. If somebody wanted to find out what time they could park there, they would be able to go to the Village Code on the website and get that information. If that information is only contained in the lease, it's really not available for anybody to see. The manager did write to indicate that the signs had been placed there, would be corrected to, to make sure that the times, the appropriate times were noted on the signs, which is a good thing. It was mentioned tonight, enforcement, going to speak to the police chief. As I understand it, if you're going to make the spaces good from 7:00 to 5:00, if that's the time, I don't know what the time is because it wasn't specified in the, in the ordinance, but let's just say it's 7:00 to 5:00. If somebody who works for that business has parked there after 5:00, they would have to pay to park. That, so there's nothing in the ordinance that indicates that the cars will be identified by placard. So in terms of enforcement, my thought is that unless the business calls and says somebody's in their spot, there's no need for parking enforcement to check that between 7:00 and 5:00. After 5:00 o'clock, parking enforcement should be checking and anybody who's parked in those spots should be paid by Park Mobile or using a kiosk. If it's an employee who's parked there after the designated hour, they are supposed to pay. It's not a freebie.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that point.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe anybody disagrees with that point.
It's just, it's not specified anywhere. The time wasn't specified anywhere.
And, and any, any type of placard or sticker that's provided, that would be administrative. That doesn't need to be outlined by ordinance. But the, the time specifications, and that's one of the reasons I wanted Chief Lyons to review this ordinance, as I said at the top of the meeting, is to make sure that he's comfortable with the, the way the ordinance reads because he's, his department is going to be ultimately responsible for enforcement.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate the time that the manager took to respond to me via email and the time that the village attorney spent with me today on the telephone. However, as written, the ordinance that you were going to introduce tonight was lacking, in my opinion, because there was no time period specified under which those spaces could be used by the business. And also, the concern about the loading zone, there being some restrictions placed on the loading zone for somebody other than the tenant of the building. Looking forward to seeing the new ordinance whenever that's introduced. Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4004 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Perrin?
No.
Reynolds?
No.
Whites?
No.
Winograd?
No.
Vagianos.
No.
And we'll have this listed for the next public hearing with the, any recommendations that Chief Lyons makes to the, to the proposed ordinance.
Yeah, and, and actually, I, I agree with Boyd that, you know, we should take a, a good look at that to see if those parking spaces can be used, that, that area can be used as parking spaces in the evening, even if we got one space out of it.
Sure.
It's worthwhile.
And, and just to be clear, the tenant's not in the, in the building yet, so, you know, we, we have a little flexibility with time, too.
Good. Moving on, I move the clerk read ordinance 3999 by title on third reading and that the public hearing thereon be continued.
Second. Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos.
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 3999?
An ordinance to amend Section, Chapter 190 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Land Use and Development to permit freestanding signs in the P, P2, and T zones and to modify the standards associated with blade signs.
The public hearing on ordinance 3999 was continued to this evening's meeting due to the fact that it was not sent to the planning board for their comments. The planning board has now discussed ordinance 3999 and has recommended that it be adopted as introduced. The public hearing on, excuse me, the public hearing on ordinance 3999 is now continued and open. Seeing no comments, I move the public hearing.
May I ask a question? Should we be sending it to HPC as well?
Already saw it and we like it.
Okay.
So I was going to actually make the comment Glenn Carlo, I think on behalf of the chamber, came and presented to us. We, we all thought very, very highly of it, but appreciate you thinking of us, Pam.
Okay.
And now I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second. Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 3999 be adopted on the third reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.[1687.12]
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Uh, yes, and I especially want to thank, uh, the chamber and especially its president, Glenn Carlo, who spent, who was tireless in nailing this thing down. And, uh, already, um, in his discussion with me this morning, he's already thinking about improving it. Um, so, um, he spends a lot of time on this and we are all grateful for it. My vote is yes.
Okay, to resolutions. The following resolutions numbered twenty-four one ninety-four through twenty-four two twenty-three are to be adopted by consent agenda with one vote by the village council. Wav fourth of July vendor fees. Twenty-four one ninety-four, that was. Twenty-four one ninety-five is grant permission to fireworks by Grunche for fireworks display. Twenty-four one ninety-six, Title fifty-nine approval, replacement of underground fuel storage tanks and fuel system, Fleet Services Division. Twenty-four one ninety-seven, award contract replacement of underground fuel storage tanks and fuel system, Fleet Services Division, not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and, no, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Twenty-four one ninety-eight, award contract police patrol motorcycle, Police Department, not to exceed eighteen thousand nine hundred. Twenty-four one ninety-nine, award contract under state contract, mobile ticketing citation violation, software licensing, licenses, not to exceed nineteen thousand five hundred. Twenty-four two, two hundred. Award contract under state contract, all band radios, Office of Emergency Services, not to exceed ninety-six thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Twenty-four two hundred and one, award contract under state contract, twenty-twenty-four Ford F three fifty four-by-four SD super cab truck, Parks Department, not to exceed sixty thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Twenty-four two hundred and two, award contract under state contract, purchase, install, and repair emergency lights and other equipment, Police Department, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Twenty-four two hundred and three, award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, snowplow and back rack for Ford F three fifty truck, Parks Department, not to exceed eight thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty cents. Twenty-four two hundred and four, award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, rental of two packer trucks, Sanitation Division, not to exceed one hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Twenty-four two hundred and five, award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, rear loader packer, recycling truck with dual steer cab, recycling division, not to exceed three hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. Twenty-four two hundred and six, award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, hook lift multifunction truck, Streets Division, not to exceed three hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Twenty-four two hundred and seven, award contract under Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System Contract, lift gate for Ford F three fifty super cab truck, Parks Department, not to exceed seven thousand forty-one dollars. Twenty-four dash two hundred and eight, award professional services contract, social worker, Health Department, Building Department, and Police Department, not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars, July through December twenty-twenty-four. Twenty-four two hundred and nine, award professional services contract, drug and alcohol testing and pre-employment physicals, not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Twenty-four two hundred and ten, authorized shared service agreement, snow plowing agreement, Bergen County. Twenty-four two hundred and eleven, chapter one fifty-nine, twenty-twenty-four budget amendment, State of New Jersey Department of Health, strengthening local public health capacity grant. Twenty-four two hundred and twelve, chapter one fifty-nine, twenty-twenty-four budget amendment, State of New Jersey Department of Transportation, Safe Roots to School Project Grant. Twenty-four two hundred and thirteen, declare property surplus, twenty-seventeen Ford Explorer. Twenty-twenty, uh, twenty-four two hundred and fourteen, authorized mailing of estimated twenty-twenty-four third quarter tax bills. Twenty-four two fifteen, accept donation Pollinator Garden at Irene Habernicle Family Park. Twenty-four two sixteen, approve renewals of twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five liquor licenses. Twenty-four two seventeen, approve project for marked bike lanes for students on a portion of South Pleasant Avenue. Twenty-four two eighteen, appoint representative to Open Space Trust Regional Committee. Twenty-four two nineteen, appoint representative to Community Development Regional Committee. Twenty-four two hundred and twenty, appoint member to Green Ridgewood. Twenty-four two twenty-one, appoint members to Ridgewood Arts Council. Twenty-four two twenty-two, appoint member to Central Business District Advisory Committee. Twenty-four two twenty-three, appoint member to Special Improvement District Steering Committee. It's a lot of it.
Nicely done, if I may say.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second. Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Yes.
One more.
Yes, okay. The following resolution numbered twenty-four dash two twenty-four will be considered separately and read in full. Whereas the Village of Ridgewood received twelve bids for twenty-twenty-four road resurfacing and repairs of various village streets in the Village of Ridgewood on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four at ten AM. And whereas the Village of Ridgewood budgeted funds in capital account number C zero four five five nine DD six six two for concrete sidewalk installation work on West Glen Avenue, East Glen Avenue, and Clinton Avenue. Now therefore be it resolved by the village council of the Village of Ridgewood that a subsequent partial award of concrete sidewalk installation work of the twenty-twenty-four road resurfacing and repairs of various village streets in the Village of Ridgewood inclusive be and is hereby awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, American Asphalt and Trucking LLC, eight eighteen Summer Avenue, Newark, New Jersey, oh seven one oh four, in an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars. And be it further resolved that the chief financial officer has certified that funds are available in capital, capital account number C zero four five five nine DD six six two. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
I just want to thank, um, Keith and everyone else for pushing this forward. Um, and I know we have a little bit of time on the calendar, so I'll take a second to talk about why I'm so happy to vote for this tonight. Um, normally we'd have to put this on the next agenda and then for the next work session, it would have built another month into it. As we've all, uh, agreed, there is widespread support, um, for these sidewalk projects and being able to get the funding in early gives us a better shot at getting this done during the summer, when less people around, and also ahead of school, when especially the Clinton Avenue sidewalks will be most needed. So I proudly vote yes for this and I do want to thank Keith and the rest of the administration for cutting through some, uh, red tape to be able to get this on the agenda tonight.
Winograd?
Yeah, I also want to echo, congratulations, Lorraine. Your sidewalks are, they're rolling out, so I proudly vote yes too. It's been a long time.
And Mayor Vagianos?
Yes, and I echo everyone else's remarks. And now we move on to public comments.
Dana Glazer, sixty-one Clinton Avenue. Um, the, uh, your comments, uh, about widespread, uh, excitement about this is not entirely correct. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my wife, uh, I'm, uh, the other members of, of the people who live on Clinton Avenue, uh, who did not know about this happening this evening, um, I suspect are not a part of that widespread appreciation either. This has been a consistent thing throughout this process where we have not been, uh, notified of things that are going on, uh, about our street, and I find it personally extremely upsetting. Um, and it, it speaks to the lack of transparency with this village council. You know, there's been meetings, uh, which we have attended, uh, and I'm now just speaking for the record, uh, because you guys have already voted on this. But, you know, I'm just going to say again, uh, Clinton Avenue has been, uh, a, a safe place for the last, I don't know, sixty, seventy years, and there has never been an incident involving a, a vehicle and a child or even just a person on our street. This is going to, while on the face of it, it sounds like a great idea, and certainly I'm not opposed to a sidewalk, it's going to make this a less safe environment because once this, this sidewalk is installed, people are going to say, well, there's no more reason to have a closed off street, which is going to create a situation similar to what occurs every morning at the high school on Brookside Avenue where you have cars double parked, people getting out, uh, K-turns, uh, and with the exception of the fact that you have small children instead of, uh, uh, high school children, uh, walking between those cars. Um, and so I say this, uh, for the parents, uh, who will be possibly dealing with this in the future where there could be some sort of incident, and I just want them to understand that, uh, we, uh, and I think I can speak for most people on Clinton Avenue, uh, addressed this, uh, and were very clear about this, that this would, in essence, make this a less safe environment rather than a more, a more safe one. And so that should be on the record and they should understand that if, in the future, when something happens, they need to come and see, you know, what occurred and why did this happen and why, why, why did this happen on our street? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana. Anyone else?
Yeah, uh, Rorick Hallaby, uh, one Franklin Avenue. Uh, I did not read the, uh, the ordinance concerning the parking at the, uh, the, the garage, the taxi stand, but to give you perspective, the way the thing was built with the bump out, the thing that was loaded and unloaded were people. If you remember, people would wait there and a taxi would come south on Broad and then pick people up, or p, taxis would come in in the morning, drop people off. So before we get into the weeds, I support totally what Keith is saying. Sit down with the, the police chief and figure out what to do there, including tearing up this bump out. You don't need it anymore. You really don't need it anymore. And because you're not loading, unloading people anymore, and it could be used for parking or for loading and unloading, uh, products for the various restaurants, et cetera. But please take a look at the, look at it with perspective before you get into the weeds. And I think the idea of the police chief looking into it is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Rorick.
Good evening. Ann Loving, three forty-two South Irving Street. I understood Councilwoman Winograd to say that she's going to put it on the next public workshop, that maybe the initial public comments should be moved later in the meeting. Now, when that happened last week, it made sense because there was a hot button issue and so questions could be answered before people asked them. But not everybody comes to a meeting with one agenda topic that they want to talk about. And lots of people come sometimes for the first time ever, or the only time ever, and they want to talk about who knows what in their particular neighborhood. And I don't think they should be made to wait until, you know, well into the meeting after a big presentation about something that they possibly have no interest in. I feel the public comments have been really compromised under this council as it is. Uh, we only allow nine people to speak at the beginning of the meeting. They're only allowed three minutes now. Um, you know, there was a lot of fanfare, which I supported, about having remote comments, but, you know, you giveth and you taketh away because only nine people can talk and then a few more can talk online. And if there's a hot button issue, people come and they line up and, you know, they struggle to get here early so they can have a chance to talk. So really, public comments have been compromised regardless of what anybody says. So I hope that in this discussion about changing the order of the meeting, that it's only going to be when there's a particular issue that you know a lot of people may have questions about and that it's not going to be that they get moved way down the line for the first session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else? And let's go to our hybrid access. Susan, you're up.
Hello, Susan Ruane, seven oh five Kingsbridge Lane. I want to re, um, comment to Keith's remarks about the footbridge being approved for April tenth budget. I don't recall that being the actual history. If we go back to the videotapes of the meetings and watch the very first budget meeting, they're, the footbridge and West Glen were coupled together as being approved with the same capital improvement. And it's a videotape and so it is part of history that you can actually look back. It was not approved in April tenth. It was approved much earlier and right now we're even talking about West Glen and it's very upsetting that the footbridge is not even talked about right now. And that, again, is something that, what happened. And now we're going to have to wait a month or two before anything is ever talked about. And I remember each council member explicitly saying that the footbridge and the, and West Glen were priority to having them done sooner versus later. And they said that it was done earlier than the final budget. But now I'm hearing all this other stuff. So can you please tell me what the truth is to why this has been taken so long? Or what is the truth? Do you guys never want to fix the footbridge? Because if that's the case, I'll let all our neighbors know so they can call into the next village council meeting to let you know how upset they are. Um, but please let us know what the truth is. All right? And also what is happening with West Saddle River Road? We heard that's also out for, um, getting estimates. And I don't know when those estimates are going to come in and when that's going to ever be happening. Again, do you want other people to call in? Because I feel like I'm the only lone voice for this. And I've been advocating and I'm getting a little tired because when I see something, I hear something, and then something else happens, that's not the truth. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comment and, um, I actually have a, a few things I want to address. Um, I'm going to start out, Ann, um, as, as you mentioned, um, we, we did something last week out of order that we thought was productive. I think that from your comments, it sounds like you thought it was productive and that's why we want to discuss it next week. Um, we're not trying to bump public comments to the middle or, you know, later in the meeting. It's when we see issues like that, that we have the flexibility to do it before public comment, which again, I think we all agree, turned out to be a good thing and that's the inspiration for what Siobhan recommended. Um, I do want to, uh, just go through a couple of things that you mentioned, that, uh, public comment has been cut back to three minutes in the beginning now. It has always been three minutes or at least as long as I've been on the council, we cut it back from five to three at the end. So this does not affect the timing and has never been affected, um, at the beginning. Um, we also, we don't take nine people from the public. We take ten for those who come to, uh, to our meeting. And then we take as many as an additional seven, um, which at three minutes apiece is fifty-one minutes. And, um, and as it states on our agenda every week, it's limited to forty minutes, but we go over that so that we can get more people in. So we do that, um, on a weekly basis. Dana has left, but, um, I want to point out a couple of things that, that he mentioned. Um, he mentioned the word transparency. I love the way that word is bandied about. Um, we, um, I know that, um, staff, um, the engineering department, the manager's office, and the police department en masse, um, did several site visits at Clinton Avenue. Um, the, uh, there were two or three lengthy meetings with the, uh, uh, people who lived on Clinton Avenue and those who are parents of school-aged children who go to Ridge, who were concerned about safety. Um, in terms of making this less safe, uh, the, our professionals, uh, our engineering department, and all the police officers and the chief, um, were unanimous and strong in their opinion that this clearly makes Clinton Avenue much safer. So to allege that it makes it less safe is really just, um, not reasonable, not accurate. Um, and, um, and in terms of this being surprise, yes, we put it on this agenda, um, at the last minute. However, this was discussed at a public meeting, uh, at a public work session, and there was unanimous consensus by this village council to move forward with this. This is simply the funding mechanism so that the work can be completed prior to, or potentially be completed prior to, uh, uh, the opening of school this year. And, and in that regard, I also want to address, um, Susan Rain's remarks, um, about truth. We did say that this is a priority and that we want to get this done sooner rather than later. Not a, not a simple project, um, renovating a footbridge that is otherwise unusable. And I certainly apologize that it is taking longer than we anticipate, but we discussed this at length. We actually put this ahead of our capital budget requests and made a special request on this so that we could move it as quickly as possible and unanimously voted to authorize. on this, so that we could move it as quickly as possible, and unanimously voted to authorize the money.
Mayor, if I may, along those lines.
By all means.
I, I did misspeak, and I owe Susan an apology for that. This was introduced earlier in the year. It was actually adopted on February 28th. With the advertisement period and with the 20-day estoppel period, the funds became available on or about April 1st. So I did misspeak as to the timeframe. I had this categorized in my head with the remaining bonding that the council adopted with the budget on April 10th, so I did misspeak with regard to that. What I do take exception to, though, is some inference that there's some intentional heel dragging when it comes to these projects. There's not. The bottom line is, is that engineering the repairs to this bridge needed to be subbed out to a separate engineer. It is an involved process, and we need to make sure that the engineering firm that we're subcontracting with to design this project is doing it and doing it correctly. And that was what Chris's charge was. When soon as the specifications came back, his office had an obligation to review those specifications, and it was put out to bid, and they will be due here in the village on June 26th. In, in comparison, here we are tonight, trying to expedite sidewalk work, not just on Clinton Avenue, but this award that you just made off consent, it goes far beyond just Clinton Avenue. There are other sidewalk projects and paving projects that are incorporated in this bid award. And our goal is always to try to do as much of this work during the summertime, when school is out and people in Ridgewood are away, so that we can maximize the flexibility of having not as much foot traffic and vehicular traffic in the town, and try to get these projects complete and wrapped up before school starts. Now, obviously, when it comes to Clinton Avenue, there's more of an urgency to that, simply based on the fact that it's a direct route to a school, and in large part, the reason the council is in favor of putting the sidewalks in are because of that access to Ridge School. So I, I just want to be clear that, you know, in one hand, we're being criticized for expediting, and on the other hand, we expedited, and it's still not quick enough. So, you know, we're doing our best here each and every day. These projects are all important. West Saddle River Road is included in the 24 Road Program. The mayor and the deputy mayor sat in a meeting, a Capitol meeting, with me last Thursday, where I looked Chris Rudisheiser directly in the, in the eye, and said, the first street I want paved when we break ground is West Saddle River Road. Did I not say those words?
And I will attest to that, Susan, if you're still listening, which I see that you are. Keith said that in the Capitol Projects Meeting, and, and he basically said, I don't care what you got to do, do that street first.
I mean, moreover, I mean, that project has sat fallow for years before this council was seated. We were the first council to fund fixing the bridge, which everyone agreed needed to be fixed. We expedited the funding for it, and, you know, I agree, you can't snap your fingers on a structural project. It's got to be safe, it's got to be done right, and it's got to last a very long time. So I understand Suzanne's frustration, but at the same time, I do agree that, you know, the truth here is that this council has moved quicker than any other council has been, and we're expediting this as quickly and safely as possible. I do also want to address my friend Dana's comments, as I do think they were largely directed at me, and thank you all for taking the lead on this. There were several projects that were approved tonight, but specifically on the Clinton Avenue sidewalks, I, I think sometimes when, you know, we disagree with the council, we use the word transparency. And that's not true. Just because we disagree with maybe the way the council comes out does not mean that the council's not being transparent. Reasonable people can just disagree on these sorts of things. But in terms of transparency, there was significant discussion, and, you know, on the record at this dais, by all five of us. There were meetings that were championed by Paul and Lorraine, and we could not all attend without an Oprah violation, so Paul and Lorraine moved forward on those. Ultimately, all five of us agreed on the Clinton Avenue sidewalks, which, if you've been watching, to get unanimous consent on a hot button topic is not something you always get at this council. We got it here. Yet the agreement and the recommendation of the police to build this, endorsement of the plan, shows widespread support for this. You know, the fact that not every single person agrees doesn't mean that it's not widespread, and doesn't mean that it's not a, a good idea. And the fact that we are moving quickly to do what we say we are going to do after we reach a decision is not a sign of a lack of transparency, it's a sign of really good government. So I respectfully disagree with my friend Dana. I don't think it's fair to accuse us of lack of transparency. There was a disagreement, I suppose, with Dana and where we came out on this, but this issue was discussed, this issue was vetted, we got to the, what I believe to be the right place, and I'm very glad that we're moving on this tonight, not leaving this for another month. And again, thank you, Keith, for cutting through red tape.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, starting from the top. So I'm feeling more optimistic than everybody else. One, the best way to introduce an idea, so there is transparency, is here, which is why I did it. And, you know, we go to a work session, and now everybody on this council, I can't tell everybody, because that would be illegal for me to tell everybody altogether. So I would like to discuss the positive meeting we had last week in the order of where we place public comment. Clearly, I'm new to council. I was a member of the public. I'm very sensitive to our public. We're still, nothing's going to change. But that being said, when people misrepresent what's gone on, was something that, to me, was a passion play. In addition to what Paul said, we've extended public comment by 15 minutes every single meeting at the beginning. That, that's just a fact. It used to be kept at 40 minutes. With the extension of hybrid, you go to 52 minutes. We've started this meeting for years, while I was a kid, and until last year, started at 8:00 o'clock. We've made it more accessible, so the public can get here earlier by starting it at 7:30. We've published a citizen's guide to how to attend and interpret our meetings. So public comment, comment is something that we take seriously. The order, I, I thought was great, and, you know, I'm pretty resolved. I think it was a good thing. I think everybody felt that it was information, and it was interesting. We have two public comments instead of one, and I am very, very proud of our public comments. So I understand there'll be a discussion and a debate, but moving the order to provide valid information, to make our public more informed, at least for me, is lockstep with the new website, the newsletters, and the pumping of information into a community that had a fairly intense appetite, because prior to Evan and I getting here, our communications and information was not as publicly available. So I, I hope the council thinks about it. If you need anything from me, let me know, but I think it was a good thing. I think everybody thought last week's meeting had advantages, and when, when we put this on, people say, where'd that come from? Well, it came from me, and I think it's an idea, and I think we should discuss it. That's one. Two, Suzanne, I want to be more empathetic, because I am new here. Ordinances, estoppel, these are, these are big things. I assure you, this council is moving quickly on the bridge, but it's a complicated, long-winded process. It's just the way government moves. So we, with ordinances, we introduce, we do this. It's right now, the bridge, just being a layperson, is out to bid. There's nothing this council can do. The bid process has to run its course, and it will be back in. If you would like, I know Lorraine and I met with you, if you'd like to check in with us on this, you can ask us, and we'll let you know. But when it comes on the agenda, just like it did last time, we'll let you know. But for this council, sometimes when you guys get going on process and ordinance and estoppel, it's, it's a lot for the public. I know. So I, I feel for you. And lastly, Clinton Ave has been discussed since I was in first grade, so I'm pretty proud of my friend Lorraine. True, true fact, not fun fact, but true. I used to take gymnastics at Ridge School, and all the parents complained about it then, so it's another lingering issue that this council, spearheaded mostly by Lorraine and her commitment and love of sidewalks, has ended. So thank you. So that's it. And if anybody has any questions about this, just email us. You know, it's so much easier for you to access us that way. And I don't, I don't think you're a geek, but I think we forget how confusing the process can be to the general public.
Anyone else? I just have one last point to make, and forgive me. Eileen, you were in that Somerville School tour that we gave today, you and I?
Yes.
And you remember what I said was the most important place in this room? Will you please tell the public what I said was the most important place in this room?
Sure. It's right over there.
That podium. It's not what goes on up here, it's what goes on over there. Because unless we hear what our, what our residents have to say, then we don't have full information. So I said that today when nobody was looking on camera. So, again, and I, and I just, I, I snicker when I hear the words "truth and transparency" bandied about in an effort to poke at us. And by all means, keep doing it, but, I mean, when it comes to the things that, here, the, the Clinton Avenue sidewalks, you may not like what this council has done, but you can't say that there was no transparency. We talked that one till you guys were done. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.